Did they answer?
I heard them.
Okay. I will call this city council meeting to order. This is a regular meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 1st of 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, please call the roll.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Roswell Gonzalez.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Marjorie Houston.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
And Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Okay, and can somebody check in with Mr. Mendoza? Because I think he's going to be online with us. Okay, first this evening is our invocation, which will be given by Pastor Rick Robertson, Executive Pastor at First Baptist Church NBC. Welcome, sir.
Lord God, we come before you tonight, standing on sacred ground, this chamber, this council, this city of St. Marcus, and we say thank you. Thank you for waking us up this morning with breath in our lungs and purpose in our hearts. Thank you for placing each of these leaders in position for such a time as this. Lord, we know that leadership is not easy, and we know that it's not glamorous, so we know it's not just titles and talking points. It's a burden, it's a calling, it's a mantle. So tonight, we ask that you fill this room with your wisdom, saturate every seat with your presence. Let not one decision be made without the whisper of your direction, Lord God. And we're praying, Lord, that you will give this council the courage to confront hard truths, the strength to stand when others sit, the grace to listen even when they disagree, and the boldness to lead, not just with intellect, but also with integrity. God, stir up the vision in this place. Let creative ideas rise, let the partnerships form, let walls fall down and bridges be built here in St. Marcus. Lord, we're praying, Lord, that right now, this is not just a city just on a map, Lord God, but this is a city destined for impact. So, Lord God, we're asking that you ignite a fire in every leader here, remind them that they're not just elected, but they're entrusted. And we, Lord God, we pray over the families, they serve, the neighborhoods, they represent the voices that often go unheard, and we lift the lowly, Lord God, defend the forgotten, and let your justice roll like a mighty river through every policy, every program, every plan. And now, Lord, breathe fresh wind into this meeting. Let it not be routine, let it not be ordinary, but let it be this moment of divine alignment, a shift, a spark, a start of something new, Lord God. We're praying, and we're declaring this place, this room right now, a room of possibility, Lord God. We're declaring right now that this is a table of transformation, and this is a night when purpose meets power. We seed it all, we seal it all right now, Lord, in the name of Jesus and the One who makes all things possible. Thank you for all that you've done, have your way in this place. In Jesus's name we pray. Thank God. Amen.
Next is, we will have our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
I'm sad to note that Dr. Jim Garber passed away yesterday. He was on, he was a member of our Planning and Zoning Commission and the Charter Commission. He spent many hours in service to the city, and he will be missed by many. Next is Citizen Comment. The city council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. There is a sign-up process. Speakers may speak once during Citizen Comment time period and may not yield time to others. You will have three minutes to speak when you state your name. You'll see a timer on the screen. You start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left, and when the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel, and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. I'll read the first five names if y'all will be ready, and in this order, and if you want to come on up, is Ana Juarez, Rick Rosenberg, Anita Collins, Charles Hickman, and Shelley O'Donnell, and I believe they're all in person. Dr. Juarez, you can move that microphone however you need.
Good evening. My name is Ana Juarez, and I live at 342 New Berry Trail. I'm here to support Agenda Item Number 19, for the city to begin discussions regarding a PID proposal from the Village at Posey Road. The San Pedro Cemetery Board, Volunteer and Events Committee, various civic organizations, and many others appreciate the efforts of the village's developers to be good neighbors and help preserve our cemetery. I and many Texas State students have worked with San Pedro for about two decades. As many of you know, in 2003, two adult men used their cars to vandalize Guadalupe Cemetery, then drove all the way across town to vandalize San Pedro. Many in the community rallied to help with their recovery. After a few days of helping out at San Pedro, I recognized how special it was and decided it would be the perfect place for my students and I to do community-based research with the local Mexican-American community. Now that I have retired, I'm happy to report that others in Texas State's Department of Anthropology will be continuing this research. I share this story because I want to emphasize how important San Pedro is for a community that has been segregated, marginalized, and neglected. In 1909, a group of 47 people formed a mutual aid organization and contributed their grain of sand to purchase the cemetery. Today, they are one of the few mutual aid organizations that continue to exist. San Pedro has often borne the cost of providing indigent burials for the city and the county, and the spirit of mutualismo is still alive and well. In 2006, San Pedro became the first Mexican-American cemetery in San Marcos to receive a historical marker. Today, we are very concerned about the impact of recent and future developments. We have seen major expansion of roads, increases in traffic and impervious cover, flooding in our culverts, and erosion along our property boundaries, which recently caused our fence to topple. We appreciate that the developers with Village at Posey Road want to protect and preserve San Pedro, and we ask the city council to approve their request to begin discussion regarding their PID proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Rosenberg.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Rick Rosenberg. I'm the Managing Principal for DPFG. We are the PID consultants for the developers of the Village at Posey Road. I'm here to speak in support of Agenda Item 19. Our client, Corey Nicholas, will speak in a bit to go through some of the specific community benefits that we anticipate this project to be able to deliver to the city upon approval of the PID process. What I want to point out is that the project, as contemplated, will generate significant economic benefits to the city with additional assessed value of over $75 million, incremental ad valorem taxes for the city of over about $450,000 a year, as well as the sales taxes generated from the residents moving into the community. The PID, as the staff will discuss with the council later this evening, the PID is a mechanism created by the state to help facilitate economic development at no cost or financial or legal risk to the city. The PID process allows a developer to access capital from institutional investors at a lower cost of capital and be able to use that to generate more affordable housing for the project. Absent of PID, the homes in this community would probably be increased by more than $50,000 to $60,000. There are public infrastructure of more than $12 million anticipated for the project, and we are seeking to utilize it to finance about five to five and a half of that $12 million plus through the PID. So the developer will have significant investment in the project above and beyond what we ask the city to support through the PID process. We look forward to the opportunity to discuss this project in more detail and work with your staff and consultants to put in place a high-quality project that adds value to the community with benefits beyond just the development itself. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Anita Collins.
Hi, my name's Anita Collins. I live in the Hopkins Historical District, but today I am speaking on behalf of the Council for the Indigenous and Tahano Community. As you consider the Agenda Item to Begin Discussions on the Village at Posey Road, Public Improvement District, the Council for the Indigenous and Tahano Community asks that you approve their request. The Village at Posey Road has generously offered to include the historic San Pedro Cemetery in their PID request to preserve and protect this burial ground where many ancestors of the San Marcos community are laid to rest. This will honor the deceased's memory and serve as a proud cultural and historical landmark for the community. San Pedro Cemetery, a significant part of our local history, was established by La Sociedad Mutualista de San Pedro, a mutual aid society largely formed by farmworkers. Their collective effort to purchase the land was their call to action when other local cemeteries refused to bury Mexicans on their grounds. The city, county, and local historians neglected this historic cemetery until a significant incident of vandalism in 2003. It was only then that San Pedro applied for and received a historical cemetery marker in 2006. Recent and future developments, including the expansion of roads, increases and increases in traffic and impervious cover, have contributed to the erosion of property boundaries along Posey Road and Old Bastrop Highway, which is the historic El Camino Real. There is a need for improved drainage and stabilization of these areas, as well as street railing, to protect vehicles from veering off the road into the cemetery. During SITC's recent tour of the cemetery, we were deeply alarmed by the signs of erosion and the damage caused by a semi-tractor trailer that uprooted this section of the cemetery, damaging historical headstones and chain-link fencing. Witnessing the urgent need for restoration to honor those who are buried at San Pedro, SITC has made a significant financial commitment earmarking $5,000 to assist with the restoration. We therefore urge City Council to open discussions regarding a PID with the Village at Posey Road, contingent upon their promise to continue working with the San Pedro Cemetery. We also ask that you consider helping the San Pedro Cemetery by matching SITC's $5,000 contribution towards the restoration. Thank you. And I've also handed out a flyer for the screening to the Tobias History interviews that we have conducted. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Charles Hickman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Charles Hickman, 915 Sycamore in Rio Vista. I just wanted to take a brief moment to offer you an introduction, as I've submitted an application to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board. Just to give you a tidbit about myself, I consider myself an avid river enthusiast. I've been on a lot of rivers across the country, and I've paddled all of Guadalupe, from Kerrville down all of the San Marcos, and all of the Blanco from Wimmerly down to San Marcos. And I can tell you from those experiences that, something you already know, we've got the best thing going on in central Texas, right here in town. And honestly, that was a big driver in me wanting to locate my family here, is the recreational opportunities this community has. And so there's my interest in serving. What I can bring you professionally, I'm a licensed civil engineer, and I manage a group of engineers focused on water resources and planning. So I've got the perspective of someone who's very familiar with planning processes, pretty accustomed to working with large teams and diverse stakeholder groups to get big things done. I'm also a resident of Rio Vista, one of the largest neighborhoods attached to our park system, and somebody who uses the parks on a daily basis with my family. And, you know, I just, there's a legacy of people who have made this a great park system here, and I'd love to play a small role in seeing that continue so that Mike's son can have 20 years of experiences like I've had here in the town. So I hope you'll consider my appointment, and thanks for everything you do for our community and for letting me take a couple minutes of your time to introduce myself.
Our next speaker is Shelley O'Donnell. Following Shelley will be, in this order, Billy Ray Callahan, Corey Nicholas, Said, Moshe Fagun, and Scott Cove.
My name is Shelley O'Donnell, and I'm with Teacher Reuse. I'm a retired teacher, and when I retired, I saw this wonderful nonprofit in North Texas that collects supplies from retired teachers and businesses and other organizations, and they started giving these supplies to teachers for free. So I thought, that's what I want to do when I retire. So I did. I started collecting supplies. Our mayor has brought us some paper that she saw on discount at some office depot, and we've had councilmen come to visit. But we were working out of a storage unit for two years, and that was tough. It was hot, and it was undoable. We were on KVIEW News, KXAN, Fox News, Spectrum News. We were everywhere asking for a building, and lo and behold, here comes San Marcos. They offered us a building in the backyard of the neighborhood enhancement utility building. Greg Carr and Tiffany, I say Whitis?
Harris.
Harris, I'm sorry, getting my people mixed up. They have supported us, and you're not going to believe the numbers. We have had 2,700 teachers walk through that door. We have seen 127 school districts from Dallas, McAllen, Houston, Fort Worth, Lubbock, come to our building. So that building is small, but we are mighty, and we make it work. We measure how much teachers take with them when they leave. We're everything barcoded. We have now given away, out of that building, a quarter of a million dollars.
Wow.
So what you have done for us is beyond belief. When teachers come in and they see what we have in this small building, and they walk out of the building with all those supplies, they are almost in tears, and I said, you've got the city of San Marcos to thank for this. And so they give me hugs, and I want to tell you that if you want to come visit us on Saturdays, I'm a hugger too. So come visit and see what they're doing. We got nonprofit of the year with the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce, and I want you to come see what we're doing and know how much teachers appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Billy Ray Callahan. Is he still here? I'll circle back.
Good evening, Mayor and esteemed council. My name is Corey Nicholas. I live at 10 Lake Circle Court, Trophy Club, Texas. We've been working on this Village at Posey Road for several years, and excited to finally start to move dirt fairly, pretty soon. We did provide, through the Office of Miss Amanda Hernandez, a slide deck with regards to the PID, and this is with regards to number 19 on the agenda. And in the slide deck, it goes over, we've provided some examples of the community benefits, like an amenity center, trails, pond systems, and other things that we proposed to include for the benefit of the city of San Marcos if the PID proceeds were issued. And I'll speak to a few specifically of those community benefits that we're proposing. It's over 18 acres of park, additional parks and open space, and as the gentleman mentioned, San Marcos has incredible parks and open space. We just want to include some more to complement that. We'd also propose putting in a trail system that connects to the trace development so we can increase traffic flow and the ability of people to get outside and move around. We have over an acre and a half dedicated for an amenity center, which would potentially include pickleball, pickleball, dog park, bocce ball, and some other outdoor activities that would benefit the community there. And then there's also some opportunities, if we are able to get enough PID proceeds, to increase the size of our utilities, for instance, water and sewer lines and lift station that could benefit other future developments. A lot of times in development, the constraint is that there's just not access to enough utilities and a way to remove sewage, so we would propose increasing it beyond our own development. Again, we've also been talking with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation in Texas called From Warrior to Rancher Foundation, and what it does is it helps, it assists veterans to learn how to ranch and farm and also build housing. So there could be some potential there to use this, use some of the lots for that program to help veterans learn to build housing and to start their own trade programs and trade companies, as well as use it as a mentorship program for the Gary Jobb Core Center. And then finally, we've heard from our esteemed guests from the San Pedro Cemetery Board, we were brainstorming with them ad nauseam to figure out what we could improve, what we could do to improve the cemetery, to increase its security and safety, such as increasing the drainage, strengthening the boundary fencing, including lighting, water, security cameras, and garbage disposal, and different things like that. So I thank you for your time, and I would hope that you support us in our PID program and help bring this to the city of San Marcos. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Said Moshe Fagun, and followed by Scott Cove.
Good afternoon, the City Council members and the mayor. I'm Said Moshe Fagun, and I'm going to talk about the importance of security of our students in San Marcos. San Marcos is a college town, and we have over 30,000 students, 11% of them are international students. The Constitution gives some rights to everybody that's living in this country, including freedom of speech, freedom of expression, freedom of religion, freedom to petition the government, and so on. So no student should get arrested because of exercising their rights. No student should be arrested because they shared their opinion with the others. No student should be arrested because they went to the protest against a genocide killing innocent people, right? So no government has the right to take these rights from the people that are living in San Marcos. If the students, they feel that San Marcos is not a safe place to live, if they feel that they are going to get harassed by ICE or other organizations, they are going to leave San Marcos, leave Texas State University. So this is a responsibility of the City Council, the mayor, to secure the right of the students and the security of the students in this city. So I encourage the City Council to take immediate action and express their support for the freedom of speech and freedom of practicing what the Constitution, the Constitution laws that the students and the other citizens of the city have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Cove.
Hello, council. I am here to speak with my colleague Said.
Your name, please.
Scott Cove.
Thank you.
I live in the La Victoria neighborhood. I've been a resident for 10 years. Yeah, thank you for having me here. I am here to speak about something that a lot of people in our community and our country don't want to speak about, and I don't want to speak about it, but I feel like I have to, and we all need to, and this is a public outlet to exercise our rights and our public speech and put things on record. And I would like to speak out about what our country is facilitating in Palestine, in Lebanon, in Yemen, in Syria, some of the most impoverished populations on earth. It may seem like this is not a local or municipal issue. I know we're talking about city business, but I think this is the business of every person in this country, every citizen, all of us, without exception, because these things are being done in our name. And right now, it was estimated that last year, every 12 hours, our country was, had formed an air bridge to provide ammunition to the Israeli military, and between December and January, every 30 minutes, there was an airstrike in Palestine with those ammunitions. One of the most destructive ammunitions that we are sending is called the MK-84. It is a 2,000-pound bomb that costs us more than $50,000 for each one, and it is wreaking havoc in Palestine. I would encourage everybody to Google the name, Dr. Mark Perlmutter. He's an orthopedic surgeon. He's from the United, he's a US citizen, a Jewish doctor that's volunteering in Gaza, and he was recently on CNN on a, you know, very public platform, and he estimated that more than 100,000 children in the past 17 months have been killed or are missing in Gaza because our ammunitions are falling on that country without mercy. And for the past month, all aid to the people in the Gaza Strip has been blocked, no food, medicine, water. So I would look, I would ask everyone in the community to Google Dr. Mark Perlmutter, and you will find very rapidly his testimony of the conditions in Gaza, and these things are being done in our name, every citizen of the United States. This money is our money, and it's our duty, everyone, to speak up, so please consider speaking up.
Okay, and I don't see Mr. Callahan, but he addressed us at 3 o'clock. So Ms. Trevino, we're ready for Item 1.
Yes. Receive an update from the Chair of the Charter Review Commission regarding his review of the city charter and provide direction as appropriate.
Mr. Gary, are you introducing this one for us?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to introduce John Temides. He's the Chair of the Charter Review Commission, just as a refresher for council. In January, the council appointed seven members to the commission because the city charter requires that at least every four years that a commission be convened to review and recommend any amendments to the, for amendments to the charter, and in addition, the council has an opportunity to weigh in on things it would like considered. And we had discussed having an interim presentation regarding the Charter Commission's role, and Mr. Temides is here tonight to speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is John Temides, and I currently serve as Chair of the Charter Review Commission, which you appointed. Joining me this evening is one of my fellow board members and commissioners, Michelle Burleson, and we thank you for the opportunity to provide you with this brief summary. I do want to let you know that the Charter Commission has met six times. We meet usually at a minimum of two and a half, sometimes closer to three hours. We've met every week since we've started, so we've taken a pretty aggressive schedule. We intend to complete all of our work for you so that you have the full final report, likely this month at the very latest, the first part of May. So you'll be getting all of this in your hands for a complete discussion, and I guess I'll be back here when that takes place. Before we start, I also want to just take a moment and let you know that Jim Garber was our vice chair, and we lost him tragically, and he was quite a leader in this effort. There were a lot of There were a lot of conversations about elections, and as many of you know, Jim Garber knew a lot about elections. There was a lot of discussion about the Planning and Zoning Commission, and nobody knows more about the Planning and Zoning Commission than, than Garber did. Throughout this process, I have in my notebook, as I was taking notes, I have the initials J.G. on things that he said on where we were building consensus. And finally, I'll just let you know that on Thursday, he called me and we had a conversation about this meeting. And we were discussing how to approach it, and he was intended to be here as well. But he was upbeat and he was the same old Jim we all knew. And there was no, well, first off, I'm just, I'm grateful for the conversation that we had, just a few short hours before he was struck down. So I just wanted to throw that out there and let you know what a large part of this report Jim was. I'll jump right in to let you know that the first thing that you all provided to us was a list of suggestions. And the first thing that we did on day one was go through all of your suggestions. Some of the summary of preliminary recommendations that you have in front of you that was produced today include some of those suggestions and some don't. I will let you know, however, that every single suggestion that the council members made, we had a thorough, lengthy conversation and debate. So basically, our first meeting was entirely about your suggestions, almost three hours. The summary, however, I'll just go through those briefly and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. Item number one was essentially, the charter requires certain publications and refers to in a newspaper of record throughout it. So we also felt that posting on the city's website and social, applicable social media would also be appropriate for those types of notifications. The second one was to increase the term of office for mayor from two years to four years, with allowance for two consecutive terms, with a break of at least two years after consecutive terms. I will let you know that this one came up, I think there was a suggestion on council member terms, and we discussed those at length. And this one came up along with that and received not votes, because we haven't voted yet, but we've worked by consensus to this point. So we've, we've spent a lot of time debating. We, when everybody's voice was heard, it was a very collaborative process. We had seven great members. I will let you know, you all appointed a great group. And then at the end, we do, we, you know, basically took a poll. What will happen at the end of our process is everything that gained consensus will then be formalized in a charter review language by our city attorney. And that will come back to us for one final meeting, and we will go through that language and take final votes on those. So you'll have a, a roll call of each one of those recommended charter amendments. So the second one, that's how it came out. We talked about it at length, and that's what we came up with. The third one was recommend that the city councils study and educate the public on single-member districts. This was the longest item that we spent on, almost nearly half a meeting at least. And I'll answer questions about that afterwards. The third was to reduce the number of council meetings. I think this was a suggestion from 22 to 20, and we concurred with that. The fifth was to limit the number of, of meetings a council member may participate in by video conferencing to three per year, with allowances for obviously disasters and excused absences such as illnesses. We felt, and again, we can go into any of these at length that you want, but we felt meeting in person is important. We understand that there's times that, that council members cannot. Number six was to require copies of, of the minutes to be voted on and approved at the following council meeting. So all council meeting, previous council meetings should have the minutes in the, in the following council meetings and should be approved by the council. Number seven was to clarify that printed copies of the code and the ordinance may be available for purchase. There's some weird language in the charter that did not include a reasonable price, so we, we changed that. Number eight was to increase the time to file a referendum on a petition from 30 days to 90 days after passage of an ordinance. And including that was to increase the time for the city clerk to verify those petitions from 45 to 60 days. We had lengthy conversations about the process, about the schedule, and the need for some additional time as fairness to the citizens. We recommended requiring a form of financial disclosure to be approved by the city council as to funding and referendum and initiative petitions. So in other words, referendum and initiative petitions and petitioners, we are asking for, we are suggesting that a, some form to be created by the council to provide disclosure of who, who is behind the efforts. To reduce the, reduce the residency requirements for members of the Planning and Zoning Commission from five years to three years. We had consensus for that. And some general provisions for, or item 12 is listed as general provisions, seems to be a catch-all in the charter, item 12. So we suggested re-titling general provisions, item 12, to ethics, because there is a number of ethics provisions in item 12, and then to create a new article 13 entitled "General Provisions." And finally, you'll see the red line versions of everything when it comes to you, of what the charter used to say, what we're proposing it should say. And you will also see red lines for updating terminology and clarifying language. That happens in every charter review. Some of the, some of the language in that charter is 50-plus years old, so we felt it needed an update. So that pretty much concludes my explanation of what we're recommending at this time. As I said, will be complete in less than a month. But if you have any questions on those, be happy to attempt to provide some context.
Council of questions? We will, we will see the final list, as Mr. Temides noted, in probably maybe Mr. Gary's second meeting in May, which will give us some time to discuss that we call the election in August.
That's correct. And then the reminder, we talked about this, is, you know, again, like, just like a lot of our boards, advisory, Charter Review Commission, council has the final say on what items they want to move forward that come from the commission, which items they prefer not to.
Which is to go on the ballot.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and, and while they're thinking of questions, thank you, Mr. Temides, for taking on this challenge again, and thanks to all of your members. I know that y'all are working really hard, and thanks to the staff, because that, it's pretty intense, been there, done that, so appreciate it.
I want to thank the staff as well. Sam and Mr. Gary and his team have been really very helpful.
Yeah, they're good, they're good. Okay, questions here, starting at this end?
On, on number seven, when we talk about the code of ordinances and available for purchase, did, when we say reasonable price, what was that figure based on?
We went round and round on what does reasonable mean. The, the language that's in there now is, just says for purchase. And typically, we referred back to reasonable as the cost of the, the cost to produce the product from the city. So not to make a profit, but also to cover the time and the copying and all that stuff.
And just clarify, it's, it's very similar that we talked about at the, the meeting, is just like our fees that we charge for the things, we can't be making a profit off the fees. It's, it's really cost recovery is what a city is entitled to do for expenditures like that. So that's all it would be. And of course nowadays, it's going to be rare that people are wanting this, but it's in the charter, it's talking about, about a printed copy. So most people now are going to get it online without paying a dime, of course.
And this is talking about the entire code of ordinances? Is that what we're talking about? Which is hundreds of pages?
In the charter, it says it, it will be made available for purchase.
Yeah.
And that's the big book.
I bet that was before the internet.
I'm sure.
You talk about how long this has, this has been there, and you're right.
I was given a copy when I got elected.
Oh, my gosh. And, yeah, and I assume that would include the development code, which is not nestled inside of it, it's a separate document because of all the, the pictures and the color and things. Did that get close to answering your question?
I didn't know if y'all had discussed a specific amount or definition or anything like that, so, but yeah, that covered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Mr. Temides, item three, when it came to discussing the single-member district, can you just tell me more or less how that conversation went?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
As I mentioned, this was probably the one item that we did spend the most time on. And it was over two meetings, really, the, the, we had lengthy conversation, there was no consensus at that time, so we started with this conversation at a following, the next following meeting. We did ask for, there was a lot of discussion, just looking over my notes here, at, you know, other cities that use it, other cities that don't, that utilize that system. We were, as it was when we were in the last charter review, one of the, it was a difficult subject to come to consensus on. Why? Because we don't know a whole lot about it. We know what it is. We know essentially the outcome, but we don't know as a board or as a commission how it's created. We don't know what it looks like. And we did not feel like starting at the ballot process was step one. I will say, from a memo that was sent to the mayor and council in May of 2021, we looked very closely at that in the 21, 2021 charter review process as well. And we sent a suggestion, I wanted to bring it up, and, you know, I had it all ready for you. But we sent a suggestion at that time in 21, 2021, essentially saying, put it on an agenda, have discussions about it, educate the public on the process, how it, how the districts are created, how many people are in the districts, what does it mean for the voters. So we struggled with, we can't do the education process for the council. The council's got to do that. So put it on an agenda, have that conversation, and then decide if it's, the other thing is, we, we researched a few other cities. We, we knew it was a very long process. It's not something that's typically done in months, rather years. It takes time to create the, the details of the single-member district plan. So in a sense, we're saying to the council, please educate the public, educate yourselves, and decide whether to take the next step. That's really what our consensus was. And I, I'll just give you an example. At the end of our conversation, as we did, we, we were looking for consensus, where does everybody stand on this issue? And we kind of brought it down to three choices, put it on the ballot, leave it off the ballot, or educate the public first. We had one vote, one commissioner for putting it on the ballot, one for leaving it off, and five for, for educating the public. So that's where we were with it. That may or may not satisfy you, I don't know, but we felt, just as we felt in 2021, starting with a, with charter isn't really the best idea. This is the city's constitution, people need to, what are, you would have had to do, done that education process anyways, before a ballot, you know, the, the charter election. So that's where we're at. I hope that helps, give you a little context.
Yes, it did. Great answers, and that task is pretty, pretty tough, and I really appreciate the, what you came up with. I think that's very beneficial to me and probably my colleagues.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, mine is more for staff, so, and for the public. So the agenda packets and the videos of the Charter Commission are online, correct?
Absolutely.
Right? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want folks to understand, like, while each of us got to appoint a representative to the Charter Commission, like, obviously, this is a conversation that all our neighbors should be engaged in. So for those who take a skim of these recommendations, I think that, I appreciate the space to, like, kind of soft-launch some of these things, so that our neighbors could also take the time to educate themselves on these issues. But my one ask for staff is, if the, those meetings could also be put on YouTube, and just because, like, their ability to fast-forward, slow down, and then also their automatic captions and transcripts are a little bit more robust than what I've seen on Granicus. So I think that might be helpful for accessibility for our neighbors who are interested, just because there's multiple points regarding referendums, and given that we've had multiple referendum initiatives, not just in San Marcos, but in surrounding areas, I think that that is something that a lot of our neighbors are interested in exploring. So, yeah, if y'all can put that on YouTube, I think that would be really helpful, too.
I have a question, and it is on item two, increasing the term of office for mayor from two years to four years. What's the reasoning behind that?
So our conversation centered around your, it kicked off with, with one of the requests for us to look at longer terms for council members, from three years to four years, I think was the original suggestion.
And the reason for that was to try to go to even-numbered years for election?
And we started there.
Okay.
And we had those conversations about, and, you know, this, this is again, one where Jim Garber was, was very outspoken on. And so we had those conversations, and then we looked at, we looked at even-year election turnouts. In fact, we asked Mr. Gary to provide us with the last four or five city elections, even year and odd year, and the turnout percentage, as well as the actual number of voters who voted for mayor and council members in even year and odd year elections. And interestingly, and Garber pointed this out, one of the things that we found was that the percentages, the winning percentages of the winning candidate in even year and odd year was about the same, even though the numbers of voters were double, triple, quadruple in even years. So we talked about even-year elections, we talked about increasing terms for council members, we talked specifically about increasing terms, the term for mayor, and we talked about the time-off suggestion in between terms. So that's the context of our conversation. Mayor, if you'd like more, I can try to give you more.
I'll go watch the meeting.
Okay, yeah. It was a lengthy conversation.
So I'm assuming that you didn't, decided not to recommend odd year or longer terms for council members, but just for mayor?
We did not, this, we did not recommend longer terms for council members. We felt the mayor ought to have the longest term. And we did not... We felt the mayor ought to have the longest term. And we did not, uh, did, we did not recommend odd year elections for mayor. We recommended only even year elections because of the number of people that vote in even year elections is so much different in San Marcos. And we determined that three years for council members with the three term, term limit, should remain. We felt it was important.
But that puts half of the council members being elected in odd numbered years, as it's been for a long time.
Right. And we, we, we felt as keeping the same rotation of two council members up every year, whether it be an even or an odd year, was also beneficial for the citizens.
Yeah. I wouldn't agree with that, but that's, that's okay.
Well, one of the things that we did determine is if you have an even numbered year and you're, you're mayor and your, your council members are all up in even years, we were also concerned about a huge turnover in...
Yeah, because it'd be half.
On the council. Yeah, it'd be half of your, I can't remember the exact, but there was a lot of really good points made about, gee, well, you know, Seguin does all their elections, or used to, in one year. Everybody's up at the same time.
There's a city in North Texas that does the same thing. I would not recommend that at all. Yeah, I think Seguin's got, they've got four-year terms, and I forget what their term limit is. Yeah, it's just, a lot of us know how crazy it gets during silly season, what we have called during political season.
Yeah.
And we, we've kind of talked about how much you can get done if you don't have an election in between. So there's a balancing there.
And I'll be real clear. We didn't talk about you. No offense, not you, mayor, but as a group.
I'm assuming you didn't.
As a group, we did not, I don't think once did any of that occur. It was all based on, what did the commission feel when it comes to an election? Because there's a whole section on elections.
Yeah, there is.
Lots of, lots of detail on it. What did the commission feel would be best for the community long-term going forward? And that's how every recommendation started and ended. And I hope that you understand that everything we're recommending, we tried to be careful, not to, we didn't want a massive change. We wanted common sense, simple changes that we felt would be best for the community moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, this came forward last time, and, and I'll just say what I did last time is, and you recall, I was against term limits, too, and still am, although we're stuck with them, that I don't, I don't care how long a mayor serves, or really a council member, but I think the mayor should, I think the citizens should get to make their choice every two years. That's where I still am. We'll see where other people land. Do y'all have anything else? I need to go to the side. Go ahead.
So you kind of addressed this. And I was just, not that I'm suggesting it, I was just wondering if it came up in y'all's discussions. But did y'all ever discuss reducing council term limits to two years and just having the entire council run every two years?
It was, it came up that if you're going through and you're playing out scenarios, and one of the scenarios that we were talking about, and I can't remember exactly which one, was a lot of, you know, a, a good portion of the council and the mayor all being up at one time. And we felt for, you know, just for institutional knowledge purposes and some consistency, we, we, we also talked about new blood and turnover. We felt that was important as well. But, so I would say it came up, but just in game playing the scenarios as we were going through the conversation. The one thing about a charter review commission is, you can only talk about what's in the charter. You know, there's nothing else to discuss. And you can spend all the time you want talking about these items. And we were careful not to rush the conversations, but once we had, we've, everybody seemed to have consensus, we would, we would try to get that verbally, and then we will go back on those items, and we will vote formally for you.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I saw at the, I guess our most recent conference in DC, some of our friends from the city of North Texas that the mayor referred to were there, and it, it was just kind of mind boggling to hear that they are all running for reelection simultaneously. And I was just like, hmm, I wonder if that ever came up.
Well, I've heard it happening in Seguin, too.
Well, and I, I didn't realize Seguin was, but I think they all turned over in that city, like, three years ago or something. So, boy, talk about, does that scare you to think about...
Well, we talked about...
Everybody in their first year?
Yeah. I mean, we talked about the balance of the knowledge, not just on the staff's part, but on the council's part as well. Because when there's, when there's knowledge, when there's consistency, and a mix of new ideas, both the council and the staff administration have, you know, equal weight in helping make decisions for the future. But if you give it all, you know, to brand-new council members, the staff are in a different position than they are with y'all now.
Yeah, that's scary. We, we had a conversation when I brought this up with council before, and nobody went for the two. Several people said the three. And I, and I brought data on people, how many had not been reelected, and some, how many people said six years was enough, which is half of the people who had done six years. I, I broached four, and several said, no, four is too long. But one of those people served six years, and one of them served nine. So, go back with that told you so. Did you have anything, Mr. Scott?
No, I'm just going to be entertained by it.
Okay. Well, again, I thank you for taking this on a second year and your, your entire commission. I know that y'all are working, working intensely, and thank you for that. And we look forward to the final report.
Okay. We'll see you all soon. Thank you.
All right. So, that takes us to our consent agenda, which is items two through seventeen. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items, number two through seventeen may be acted on by one motion. However, council member can pull one of those for separate discussion. Council, is there anything anybody wants to pull?
Number eight.
Ms. Rodriguez wants to pull item eight. Are there any others? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve two through seven and nine through seventeen.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Trevino, are we push-button voting tonight?
No, not today.
Okay.
Mr. Gonzalez, mayor, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Sol Gonzalez.
Mr. Gonzalez, sorry. Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm ready for a roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Sol Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Consent. All but eight. Item eight.
Okay, okay. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Council, usually we go to public hearings and come back to the items that are pulled.
I'm so sorry. I want to vote, uh, no on item nine.
We're going to record a no.
We can do that.
On, we haven't gone to the next item yet. It's either that or bring the whole thing back.
But did we finalize that vote? Or, so we have to recall?
Yeah, y'all approved the consent. Excuse me. We do an offer to the board or like, just go back and edit it.
We...
I said no for nine.
Well, I mean, she just wants to say no on item nine.
Me, too.
No, she just wants to record a no for item nine.
And I heard she wanted to.
Yeah. And since we have not gone on to the next item yet, we'll, we'll do that, which is...
No problem.
Where I was going with that. Okay, so now we will, we'll do number eight. So, Ms. Trevino, if you would read that one into the record, please.
Consider approval of resolution 2025-18R approving an amendment to the contract with Flock Group, Inc. for additional equipment and software for the police department's license plate recognition technology in the amount of $124,068.49 for the first year, with the option to renew for three one-year extensions. Authorize city manager her designate to execute the contract amendment on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Okay. Uh, to get this on the table, I do need a motion on this.
Motion to deny.
Uh, I heard Mr. Scott first. I'm sorry. That was a motion to approve. I don't know, maybe this here works better, but...
Second that.
And, Mr. Mendoza, was that a second?
Ma'am.
Okay. That's to get it on the table. Ms. Rodriguez, you pulled this one, so you may speak first.
Uh, yeah, it was actually going to be a point of order. Um, so I went back and watched the video from the initial motion I made on February 4th. The motion was explicitly for this to come back, the first meeting in June. We're two months too early, and so I was going to ask on procedural grounds, we keep the same energy that we had for that first initial motion, and postpone this to the date that we all decided.
Would that be a motion to postpone to the first meeting in June?
Which is June 3rd, yes.
June 3rd, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. So, um, so that's what's up for discussion now. Mr. Gary, I, I need your assistance here, please.
Yes, mayor. And I, I did go back to, to look at the videos well, and it, it did appear that there was a motion to postpone until the first meeting in June. And so, it was placed on this agenda, but...
Well, we had talked about then, or any time before then, that the policy had come to us, and that we were good with it, which has actually happened. So I, and the reason why I, I didn't say anything about this, I thought we had said, it, it would for sure be on by the first meeting in June, but it could be on sooner. So, is that what I said immediately before the vote was taken?
It was just...
Was June, first meeting in June?
It was headed that way, and it was a, we had to watch it a couple of times.
Okay.
It was headed that way at the very end of the discussion. It was like, are you saying something along the lines, when the policy is ready, or June? And I think it was kind of presented in an either or. And Ms. Rodriguez had clarified June, and so that was the motion to amend.
And that's what we voted on.
Yes, ma'am. It, it was a little bit confusing, but after you watched it a couple of times, we clarified...
And mayor, I, to your, I went, when I went back and watched it, I think I actually had my mic off. So, that, I think that's probably why you couldn't hear it at the initial time you watched it. But yeah, it was June 3rd.
Okay. So, we have a motion by you.
What are the consequences?
To, um, would you say that again, Mr. Scott?
What are the consequences of putting it up till June? Are there any?
Will the price hold, is one question that I had.
Well, and I'm sorry, mayor, oh, but my question is, if the reason for postponing was giving direction to staff, and that direction has already been fulfilled...
That wasn't the motion.
What's the, no, I, no, but the reason why, we just gave staff more time than apparently they needed. At this point, what, what's going to happen between now and June, other than us waiting two months? Like, is staff going to bring any additional information to us, or is anything going to change, or are we just...
So if I may, since I, the motion, when it was made, was actually picked up by the Daily Record, the Community Impact, and other forms of news outlets. When you talk about participation from the public...
Right.
If I'm, if I'm reading that this is to come, to come June 1st, or June 3rd, whenever, and I want to participate and get my schedule aligned, that's, that's, that's what we're impacting right now.
Well, so that, that's answered my question. I, I wasn't meaning one way or the other. I'm just saying, what, what are we anticipating to happen between now and June 3rd? Which, I guess you're saying, getting more, more...
It's, it's what we said we were going to do. That's what went out to the public. Therefore, it's really not fair to the public to do it any sooner than that. But, but we do have a question, and it's related to the postponement that Mr. Scott was asking, and I was going to ask. And that is, just for information, is, is the price going to hold? And his question is, are there any other implications if, if we wait until June 3rd?
I can't speak for Flock as it relates to the contract price. And so I would defer to, I believe our Flock representative is here.
Supposed to be on.
If the panelists could move her over. As it relates to the pricing, that's one question. I'll defer to Flock and to our city attorney. As it relates to community safety, I would simply point out that that's that many fewer cameras that are going to be able to assist in reducing crime.
I'd like to, do we?
I'm, I'm looking to see if, now it looks like she just got moved into panelist. Can we let her respond? Is she on?
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. This is Kristin McLeod, Community Engagement Manager with Flock Safety. I have just reached out to your territory sales executive to hopefully get you that response. It looks like he is responding momentarily, and I'll hopefully get you that answer in just a moment.
Okay. In the meantime, the conversation needs to be related to the postponement. Oh, I saw you turn your microphone on. I thought maybe you had something.
I can't wait. My com, whoever has comment.
Anybody else? I think you're next.
Okay. I, I guess for the postponement, Shane is asking about the price, if there's going to be like a price.
I asked about the price. He just said, what implications are there?
Gotcha. Okay, yeah. Um, I have a comment on that, which is, I think that community dialogue is worth an increase in price. If we were really passionate about all the money that is being spent by police, we, I wouldn't have to have waited like four years to get progress on the whole situation regarding police using their city-issued vehicle, a uniform, and other equipment to, on their side gigs. So, I feel like that's a kind of unserious concern. That's all I have.
Um, and I'm curious about this, but it's not going to change my decision, because we need to do what we told the public we were going to do.
I just noticed Ms. McLeod has her hand up. I don't know if she's been up the whole time.
I don't, hold on. She wasn't, she's not on my screen. But if she's got her hand up, by golly, we're going to let her speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. I just heard back from our sales team, and there would not be a change in price if we were to postpone till June.
Okay. All righty. So, that question's answered. And if there's no other conversation about this, we will vote on Ms. Rodriguez's motion to postpone this to the first meeting in June, which is June 3rd, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, the second...
Second?
Right, no, it was seconded by Ms. Garza. I just wanted to repeat it.
Oh, okay.
All right. Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Sol Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
So we will see this on June 3rd. That was the only item that we pulled, so we are to, item 18.
Consider pull the resolution 2025-69R approving the award of a construction contract to Austin Underground, Inc. for the Davis Lane Lift Station and Gravity Main Improvements project in the estimated amount of $2,536,633.81. Authorize city manager her designate to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott to approve. Looking for a second.
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Mendoza?
I have a second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. I assume that was for approval. Any questions? We're ready to vote, Mr. Trevino.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
I heard you.
I think he's...
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Okay, thumbs up, so he said aye.
He said aye, yes, ma'am, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Sol Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 19.
Receive a stop presentation considering entering into discussions regarding the village at Posey Road Public Improvement District, considering appointments to an ad hoc committee and provide direction to staff.
And this is discussion, and Ms. Hernandez has a brief presentation for us.
It'll be brief. Yes, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. The subject property is approximately 50 acres, and the applicant has submitted a petition for the creation of a public improvement district, or PID. PID are financial tools that developers use to pay for constructions of roads and utilities, parks, things like that. You heard about it during your citizen comment period today. This property is across from Posey, across Posey Road from the Trace Development, which also has a public improvement district. Just a real brief history, after Trace, Whisper, and La Cima were approved for PIDs about 11 or so years ago, city council adopted what we called the residential incentive moratorium policy. The resolution, which was attached, attached in your packet, states that the city would not consider incentives for residential developments and included two expiration criteria. The first of those criteria is that the comprehensive plan update were to be complete. We have since completed our comprehensive plan update. The second criteria for the end of that policy is that the city determines there is a need for incentives for residential development. So, we are bringing this to city council before we start having the discussions with the developer to see if city council is interested... to see if city council is interested in moving forward with these discussions for this incentive. The current request is for the Village at Posey Road. It was annexed and zoned in 2022, and the development has an approved plat, watershed protection plan, and public improvement construction plans. Next slide. At this time, we're seeking your direction. First, would you like us to enter into these discussions? Are we ready to entertain PID in San Marcos again? And if the answer to that is yes, then we would ask whether city council would like to appoint a committee to be part of those discussions. If you would like a committee, I just wanted to point out that we have a PID committee consisting of Mayor Houston, Houston, and council member Saul Gonzalez and Matthew Mendosa, who are currently reviewing the River Bridge Ranch PID amendment, as well as considering an overarching PID policy. So, that would be staff's recommendation. Send it to that committee, since they've already started to have those conversations. But with that, I will conclude my presentation and take council's direction.
And that's what I would highly recommend, too, 'cause we're about halfway there on our discussion. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, you're good with, and it's just really a two-part. Do we want to consider a PID? And if we do, do we want it to go to the PID committee?
Uh, yes, ma'am. I just, uh, wanted to ask that if the, if members agree to send it to the committee, that we definitely make sure that, uh, San Pedro is included in those discussions.
Whenever this came through the first time, we had some very strong words for the applicant about recognizing that there's a cemetery there, and what can you do? And they, they heard that, and we thank you for that. So, yeah, we spoke strongly for consideration for San Pedro Cemetery.
And I guess my question for you would be, do, would they be allowed the opportunity to provide comments to y'all, to be a part of this process?
Uh, that's, that's what we've done, and the other that we did. Well, we'll have some discussion first. We'll make sure we have crystallized our questions, then those get sent to them. Sometimes we give them time to answer. We'll have another committee meeting in order to make sure that they've got time, if needed. So, we work all that out.
Okay, good. As for me, uh, if we're ready for recommendations, uh, I'm good with going into discussion, and I'm also good with it going to the, uh, committee.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
Mayor, I'm fine with it. The only question I, I do have is, I have 80% of my relatives buried there. If you are okay with it, uh, I still would like to serve in this committee.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a PID committee about the subdivision.
Right. But I, I thought we might discuss at the same time, San Pedro Cemetery.
All right, okay. Y'all okay with Mr. Gonzalez continuing on this committee?
Mr. Scott, ma'am.
Okay. But thank you for that disclosure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So, you're, uh, let me know if you're a, a yes, yes, or...
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Garza?
Yeah, I'm a yes, yes, for sure.
Thank you. Uh, so am I, Mr. Scott.
Yes, twice.
Yes, yes. Mr. Mendosa?
Yes, yes, and thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez?
Yes, yes.
All right. Does that give you what you need, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all very much.
All righty. Ms. Trevino, item 20.
Discuss and consider appointments to the following boards and commissions. A, Convention and Visitors Bureau Board. B, Library Board. C, Neighborhood Commission. D, Parks and Recreation Board.
Okay, folks, um, let's do CVB first. We have one vacancy, uh, to be filled by someone representing a hotel with more than 90 rooms. We have someone. And so... We have the name of a Renee Voskis. I forget which hotel they're with. So, I will put that name into play. Are there any other names? That was the one application that we had, but they meet the criteria. Ms. Trevino, we will vote, it's a one-for-one.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Mendosa.
Aye.
Mr. Lorenzo Gonzalez.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Saul Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Uh, next is our library board, and we have one vacancy. And this is, can be a resident or a non-resident, either one? Okay, well, that takes care of my note. Oh, no, that note's on the next one. Uh, and we have four people who have, um,